According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
As council member of the City of Darlington.
As council member of the City of Darlington.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve the peace.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve the peace.
And carry into effect, according to the law.
And carry into effect, according to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
To exercise the duties of the office I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States.
And preserve, protect, the Constitution of this state and the United States.
As mayor of the City of Darlington.
As mayor of the City of Darlington.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve the peace.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve the peace.
And carry into effect, according to the law.
And carry into effect, according to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And it's not every day I get to, we get to have the US Congress come to town. So I'd like my, my family, if they could, to come up and y'all walk in there. Have a picture here if you want to. But I'd like to, I'd like for my family to come up. Take a picture real quick. My wife just loves this. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I'm welcoming you to the January the 2nd, 2024, County Council Meeting. Appreciate everybody coming to you with Pastor David Mullins. Can you some ladies and a word of prayer?
If you would, would y'all stand and join me in prayer, please? Let's go before the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord, we do come to you humbly tonight. And just recognizing you, Lord, for who you are. Giving thanks and praise for the year we just finished. And thanks and praise for the many blessings, Lord, that we know that you'll, you'll be giving us in this coming year. Lord, having to sit here just now and, and listen to the oath of office being given and administered and accepted. Lord, I couldn't help but notice at the end of it all, it said, "So help me God." And Lord, that's what I pray. I pray that this council and this mayor or governing body for this town. We love it so much. I, I pray, Lord, that they'll continue to seek your guidance in all the decisions that are going to need to be made and how to, how to govern and, and how to lead this city for the betterment of the people here in this town. Lord, I pray that the citizens will recognize that the huge responsibility that lay on the shoulders of, of these folks that have willingly said, "I, I'll take that job," and, and been elected by the citizens, to stand behind them and, and support them and pray for them, keep them lifted up. And so, Lord, that the decisions made will be those that are in the best interest and for the betterment of, of the City of Darlington. We just thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis, Lord. And I pray that we'll take time to acknowledge those things, those blessings. And Lord, in all the things that we say and do, may all of those honor, glorify you and sing praise to your holy name. And we just ask these things in the precious name of Christ Jesus, our Savior and our Lord. Amen.
Representative Williams. Representative Williams. Everybody just stay, stay standing. Everybody stay standing. I'm gonna let you, can you lead us into the pleasure of the league? Representative Williams, put this tonight off.
All right, let's, let's stand. Our pleasure is leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular meeting on December 5th, 2023.
All right, do we have approval of minutes from the city meeting on December the 12th, 2023?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our special meeting on December 12th, 2023.
I second, Lord.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Grayman, Mr. Backus.
I second the motion.
And Mr. Seager, Mr. Gordon. Just proceed. Mr. Seager, thank you. All right, do we have approval of meeting agenda for our, the regular meeting on January the 2nd tonight, 2024?
I make a motion that the meeting agenda for our regular meeting on January 2nd, 2024 be approved.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Grayman, Mr. Backus. Okay, Mr. Seager, we're getting, Mr. Seager, thank you. All right. Payne, you got it? All right, Ms. Williams, how are you doing? You ready, Ms. Williams? Do we get our chair? All right, it's not every day that you turn 100 years old. Representative Williams, some of the church members that y'all want to come up to? Representative Williams, where you at? Any members going on? Turned 100, a long time, your friends are gone. All right, so we want to give recognition that we do a proclamation for Mrs. Williams and Mr. Payne, will we, of course?
Cross the nation honoring Anseline Williamson on her 100th birthday. Whereas is with great joy and admiration that we gathered to celebrate the remarkable milestone of Anseline Williamson's 100th birthday on January 10th, 2024. And whereas Anseline Williamson has been a cherished member of our community embodying strength, resilience, and wisdom throughout her century-long journey. And whereas Anseline Williamson has been a source of inspiration and guidance to countless individuals, leaving an indelible mark on the lives she has touched through her service as a nurse in the intensive care unit for newborns at the Cloud Hospital. And whereas Anseline Williamson's unwavering commitment to family and community has been a shining example for generations, become as wife to Arthur, as mother to Janice, Barbara, Arthur III, and Diana. And whereas Anseline Williamson's contributions to our community have been immeasurable. Fostering unity, compassion, and a spirit of generosity among all who have had the privilege of knowing her as shown in her commitments to Macedonia Baptist Church and in her dedication as a deaconess at Lee Street Church of God. And whereas Anseline Williamson's dedication to preserving our shared history and cultural heritage with education at Rosenwald Elementary School and Mayo High School has enriched our community, ensuring that future generations will continue to benefit from her knowledge and efforts. And whereas Anseline Williamson's 100th birthday is a testament to the power of love, resilience, and the human spirit, serving as a reminder to the countless blessings that come with life well lived. Now therefore, I, James C. Boyd, on behalf of the City of Darlington, do hereby proclaim January 10th, 2024, as Anseline Williamson Day in honor of her 100th birthday.
We know with 100 years, you've got something to say about it.
It's not over.
Yes, we are.
I urge all residents to join me in expressing our deepest gratitude and admiration for Anseline Williamson and to take this opportunity to reflect on the lessons she has taught us through her remarkable life. Let us celebrate her centennial milestone with joy, love, and appreciation. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Darlington to be affixed on the 2nd day of January in the year of 2024. Curtis Ford, Mayor, City of Darlington.
I want to tell the way of the man, we could say you kissed a bride, she already jumped in for a kiss. I guess we did the same thing, we were all excited. You, you got anything you'd like to say? Words of wisdom?
I was about to say, I wish y'all coming out. And I know that you wish me a very happy, happy birthday. And I thank you all for coming out. Everyone. I, I, I'm sorry, I just don't come up with a say. Just thank you all, everyone of you.
I didn't bring any gifts.
I, I didn't have a joke that I would. I don't mean it, but I'm just something to make you laugh. If you want to, give me a gift. I think $1 a year would be nice. One of the deacons said to me, "Why can't you make a penny a year?" "One cent a year." You didn't laugh at that. But I just thank you all again. I thank the Lord and bless me. And it's not me, it's him. And let us all know that. It's not him but me. Not me but him. That's the gospel this far. Thank you all again. Love you all.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sister Barbara Bruce. Say Happy New Year to all of you. This is my spiritual mother. When I came to Lee Street four, five years ago, when you, when I walked in that church, I saw you. I knew you were a saint. I knew you were a mother, a sister, an aunt. And most importantly, I knew you were the woman of God. And I have prayed to the Lord to ask that I could see and meet someone such as you. You invited me to your home. We talked, we laughed, we watched Judge Judy together. We danced together, we ate together. This day is an honor and a pleasure for me, Mother, to see you as my spiritual mother, took me into your home and in your life and under your wings. You, my friend, my mentor, my everything. And now that my mother has passed this year, you have truly been that all during that time. So I thank you. So people, the messages have come to me and it has been said in church, be careful how you treat people along the way. Because life is precious. And you never know, you may be entertaining an angel, a spiritual mother, or a friend. So let go all of hatred and malice and anything. Forgive people. And even if they're living or dead, just forgive them and love on why you see them. So this is for you, Mother. I love you. And may you live to be 100 more years. Love you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to take time to do that. All right, citizens wishing to speak, you have five minutes. We ask that you limit it exactly five minutes and you'll cut that off then. Okay, we have first Adrian.
Hey. Hello, I do a nonprofit, Darlington. And what we do is we manage several landings in the area. We've been doing it since 2019. And we were trying to reach out to our representatives for help. But they, clean them, but they won't help. Keep begging them for their numbers, campaign office numbers, for help to clean our landings. They won't help. We go down there weekly and we clean our landings, all the trash that our county wants. I just want cleaner landings and more protective workers to store the buildings like St. John and Froton Garden, which the board, I guess, wants to get rid of for company interest. That's all. I'm trying to get my trash bags here for my landings. That's why I'm here. That's it. I wonder if y'all will help me.
You say landings?
Yeah. I manage 34 Ladders Lake, sometimes Williamson Park, the Country Club, because the Country Club ain't even getting cleaned anymore. What kind of county doesn't clean their Country Club? Like, you run in there, you got bushes hitting you in the face. We use the Country Club Park, you get the black creek to catch food to eat. It's so hard to eat and live. And we're not going to give up our landings, I'm not going to do that. But we would just want more support for our landings. They're getting overrun with trash and litter and batteries and tires. And there's potholes down there. And it's basic issues, we can help. And I'm here today to help y'all with it, just help me get it done. That's it. That's all.
So the landings is in the Country Club and where at?
The landings is 34 and Ladders Lake. The Country Club is over there. Williamson Park, we all know where Williamson Park is.
So just those three?
I want to manage them all. They're not getting the proper management and it's not right. It's not. It's not fair to me.
Total of how many?
We have Ladders Lake.
Total of how many?
34, Williamson Park. Ladders Lake, 34, Williamson Park. That's the only thing we manage on a weekly.
Asking for permission?
No, I'm asking for trash bags, because I've been, I've been begging our representatives.
This is something you just do on your own?
I do it on my free management since 2019. And I've just been trying to beg our representatives for help and it's just like talking to a brick wall. And it's like, I can't get my voices.
Give us a favor, give us a number where we can reach you and we'll get you some help. 5133.
I appreciate y'all for that.
I just want a little bit of clarification. All of these addresses are located, they're inside the city. And our streets and sanitation department does not.
Again, it's not a federal issue to you, but it's a federal issue to me.
No, I'm asking the question, sweetheart.
It wouldn't make, y'all wouldn't be a manager. The county manages 34. So it would be their responsibility to take care of it. And they're not, I'm taking care of how to haul the trash off.
Okay.
Or it won't get done.
Exactly. What I was asking, for us, for what we can do, I would need to know whether these locations are inside the city and our streets and sanitation department are not servicing it.
I think Williamson Park is. But the problems with Williamson Park is a bunch of rotten boers that could trip runners.
Okay, so Williamson Park is the only one? I know parts of the country.
Oh, yeah. I'm just here to get trash bags, I don't know anything about that. I've just been begging for five years. And our government can represent you, Crane Ward, and it can represent me.
I'll get your trash bags, Adrian, and I'll bring some part.
I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Do I have to know again? This time I think I'm gonna do a little bit. I'm gonna take a co-pay from labor now, I'm like. Well, he went to Garrett's first to delegate a cemetery for the $65,000. That, he says that he was there to delegate, delegate a cemetery, but he was speaking to the living. Okay, but he was, but he was speaking to the living. So I'm speaking to y'all again. Now, our new members, welcome. Now, all the other city council members, the mayor, everybody in the city has a copy of that. May I give you one, please?
Yes, sir.
That's my last copy, so please make one of the frank bags. And congratulations. And now, since we got the congressman here and the representative, I want them to look in my case and see what they can do. Because the local city people don't say anything, not in one word. I did everything I was supposed to do. I got a license, a plumber, I did it, torque cleaning, I did everything. But the problem is and the problem was that the sewer was broke. And that was the reason why I couldn't get my water turned back on. For 10 years, it was backing up. They was telling me that my pipes was falling in and crumbling. So I had every pipe dug up. And they was almost in perfect condition. And we found out it wasn't my pipes causing the sewer problem and the smell. It was the sewer water backing up on my property. So I started from over. And they kept getting me in the runaround what we can do with. Now, I gotta say that Mr. Brown at the City Water Department went down there twice and sucked all the water thing out. But he said that he couldn't do anything because they was on Reed Street working on the sewer. And they been doing Reed Street next for, it was months. And they kept giving me different dates. Now, once I got my license code by Mr. Russell, Sheila went down there five times. And every time she'd give me a different reason why I can't get my water turned on. And one time she told me that the sewer water that was coming back was rainwater. So I came down to the City Water Department and got one of the supervisors to go down there and smell the water, say, "That's sewer water." He told me he had peppermint candy in his mouth, so he couldn't smell it. Then he told me, "Curse it. We cannot fix your water until we fix Lee Street." That was the problem, the whole 10 years I was having my line snake out and thing. Now, I just want y'all to be reasonable. Now, you say, "First reason, Payne told me I didn't own the property." You can see there where I got the power of turning, filing the co-powers. And then he say I need to do a, a claim on, what you call it? Claim, I did that too.
The insurance claim?
No, what's a claim y'all calling it? Toy claim. I did, I did that. Every time they give me different excuses, prolonging me, nearly packed thing. Sheila went around the house, at first she told me I could put it from here. Then she said I can't put it because it's a rental property. And then she looked on my back post and saw the hot water here was too close to the circling of walls. I had it inspected twice. Once I had the water come off for three months. The city said I had to have it inspected before I could turn it back on. Then later on, I had the whole house rewired. And the city came and inspected, everything was cursed. Yet she did that to hold me up. Now, what I'm asking now, that the congressman and the representative look into this too again, because the city have saved nothing to me after all these months. I did everything that a man could possibly do. It makes the city look bad. You know, who do you think the people in the community that talk to me blaming? You, Mr. Mayor, my mayor, all y'all city council. They say y'all need to do something to help me, because I tried to do the right thing. And like I say, I don't want something for nothing. Do I look like I want something for nothing? Okay, now, to make it short, they gave me the runaround. And I tell you what the last thing Payne wrote me. He said, "The reason why we can't help you is because you don't have a silly real, a silly license to collect rent."
Thank you, Mr. Jones, we'll get with you this way.
Okay, you can get ready, man. And what, because I, I gotta ask though.
And Miss Sheila Jones with her close support, we'll get with you this way.
Okay, that's all I want.
You just let me clear up something.
Yeah.
When he says Sheila, it's not me. It's Sheila, Nicole's important, she.
Yeah, she told me.
Not me.
Found all kinds of problems. And now they tell me I'm gonna have a license, that's my sister, my first cousin, profit, they won't pay me anything. Bless goodness to my heart. Yeah. I love my city, but my city doing me wrong.
We love you all.
I don't.
Will you reset the clock, please?
Ma'am, it's already started.
But I have to start my presentation.
Yes, ma'am, you started once you passed the stuff out quick.
Well, that sounds about right for you, mayor. Let me see if I can speak quick, quickly. Good evening, mayor, Councilwoman Gloria John. What I have just provided to you, and what I will read for the record, is a copy of a cease and desist letter sent by my attorney on December the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, to the city manager, John Payne, and the city's attorney. The cease and desist letter reads, Dear Mr. Payne, please accept this correspondence as notice that I represent Ms. Janie Layton, also known as Layton Consulting Corporation. Via a no further second, twenty twenty-three letter on City of Darlington letterhead, you published online, you asked Darlington citizens to watch the attached video and read the accompanying article, so that you understand what's going on in Darlington. The content of that letter was, and remains as of the date of this correspondence, correspondently published on the City of Darlington website through this read more link that you can note in the letter. You are well aware that Ms. Layton, her company's role on the project you are now informing City of Darlington residents was a failure, was solely as grant administrator. The South Carolina Supreme Court has specifically held that for a depli- deplamation statement to be actionable, it is not necessary that a false charge be made in a direct, open, and positive manner. Mere insinuation is as actionable as a positive assertion if it is false and malicious, and the meaning is plain. And the court case that this was noted in is also noted. Your public statements published on City Letterhead and the City Wells site falsely represent, insinuate to the public that Ms. Layton and her company were the project administrator of a project you essentially are telling the citizens, the city residents, they would have to pay for it twice at the tune of another three million dollars. Your comments are false, your comments are false, prejudicial, and per se actionable, as they call into question Ms. Layton and her company's fitness and their particular business and profession. I hereby demand that you cease and desist making such statements about Ms. Layton and/or Layton Consulting. Specifically, I am demanding that you remove from the City of Darlington website the false declaratory remarks about Ms. Layton and her comp- and/or her company within five days of the date of this correspondence. I am notifying you that the publication of these remarks is harming Ms. Layton and her company, and, and refuse, and refusal to remove them will only cause further prejudice and harm. By courtesy copy of this correspondence, I am notifying City Attorney Kevin Everidge of this demand to kind result. What I'm asking tonight. You took a minute away, I want, I have one thing. I'm asking that this council take action on the case.
Please don't push me, okay?
I appreciate.
So my question is this.
No, ma'am, I ask you.
My question is this. I have a question. My question is this.
Michelle.
I have a question.
I got Michelle coming up.
I have a question.
Michelle, Nick.
Senator, I mean, um, Miller. What do you think we need to do with something like this?
I think we need to turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Etheridge, and let him investigate and respond on behalf of the city.
So you don't think the council needs to?
I don't think council needs to individually get into a discussion about a letter that has been sent by an attorney that indicates that that attorney is representing somebody who has a claim against, may have a claim against the city. I think that's what attorneys are for, for the city, for the city, to use their attorney to respond to the, um, statements made by the Wukila Law Firm, um, by Patrick McLaughlin. So that's, that's what I think is the proper way to handle it.
So you don't think that we need to just ask the city manager to take it down, to eliminate getting caught up in a lawsuit?
Absolutely.
We'll discuss this afterwards. Right now, this is.
We don't, we don't.
I told you right now, this is comment, okay? And I think that there needs to be a consultation between the city admini- administrator and the, um, city attorney to address the situation. But I'm seeing this for the first time, so I don't know anything about the underlying factual allegations. I've got it here, so I am not the city attorney, so I'm not gonna respond as the city attorney as to what needs to be done. Ultimately, it's like, this pain needs to get with Mr. Etheridge.
Ask me a question as a city attorney, I'm asking you a question as a council.
I'm not offering a legal opinion, because that requires me to use my expertise as an attorney to answer something, and I'm not doing that. I'm a single, I am a single member of this council.
I'm asking you a question as a council person.
And I have answered you as best I can.
That's my question, as a council person, not attorney, okay? I'm asking you as an attorney.
Let's go, move forward. This is comment only. This is comment only, listen, all right, listen, listen.
I was asking that this city council, who supervises, who supervises the city manager.
Mayor, I just wanna ask.
This is comment only, please listen.
We don't meet, we don't ever meet to discuss anything. Only time we ever talk is in council meetings. We never have any other meetings to discuss anything. We don't meet, no, we don't have, we never have meetings as a group to discuss anything. Only time we ever discuss anything is at a council meeting. That's it, that's the only time.
I did know that when I was looking at the county council agenda meeting that was sent out by Ms. Bishop, that they have a procedure that if something is, um, brought to the attention of council, I believe it's at the request of a council member, it can have, they can ask that it be added to an agenda to be addressed. We don't have that, right now. I'm not saying it wouldn't be a good idea to have it, but I think that it's a way that your concerns can be addressed.
We haven't done anything, we don't have meetings after regular council meetings to discuss anything.
We used to have.
Mrs., uh, moving forward.
Mayor, let me, let me just ask this one thing. It was, uh, it's relating to the last council meeting where we, where we had those, um, the, the lawyers and those, um, consultants about this. And I thought that the action taken then, that this would be sent to, um, uh, some other lawyers to, to look into it for us, and then come back to us for whatever action we needed.
We have asked the city attorney.
No, 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 that was something we did in here. We, 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 we voted for this to go to them to come back. That's what I'm saying, and that information has not come back. So I'm, I, I just simply want, whenever you decide that we can meet, that, uh, why are we even putting any information out about it?
So the public, so the public knows, public comment is a privilege to be able to come in and speak. Public comment is for you to bring your comments to the city council. We were more than glad to talk with you about it and discuss things with you, just like the gentleman did, gave you the number. We'll, we'll work to see if we can solve, and help him get trash bags, whatever the issue is, we'll work to see if we can solve it. Uh, during the city council meeting, uh, the public comment is a public comment, you're limited to five, five minutes. I've asked everybody, and I've done it for four months, four years, and this next four years, if you continue to talk over me and not, uh, do as I ask, you will be asked to leave. Uh, Michelle, Black.
Okay, Mrs. Pemberton, Carl.
Hello, good evening, everyone. That's a hard act to follow there, but, uh, I just wanted to say tonight that I'm happy to see that the City of Darlington, nailing Ms. Mayor Morgan Smith, is celebrating our rich history in our architecture and our places that really and truly make Darlington what it is. So by show of hands, who all remembers the Dargon Amphitheater?
Oh, yeah.
Who remembers Amphitheater? You guys? You're not old enough? Come on, Judge. Well, I tell you, as a child, the Dargon Amphitheater was one of my most favorite places in Darlington, as it was for countless individuals. At the last record in two thousand sixteen, there were over two thousand people in attendance at the Dargon Amphitheater to celebrate May Day for our students and our citizens. And that was the last time the Dargon Amphitheater was allowed to the City of Darlington by the Darlington County School District and Board. They closed down the Darlington Amphitheater, even though Ms. Mary Wood Dargon bequeathed at her death a sum of money for the City of Darlington to establish this memorial. It had been owned and operated by the City of Darlington since nineteen twenty-five, until two thousand sixteen, when the Darlington County School District closed it down. Now, I believe Councilman Gardner lobbied to the school district in two thousand eighteen to try to save our amphithe- excuse me?
I'm asking you.
But you're interrupting me.
I am, cuz I asking you to not.
What do you wanna ask of me, mayor?
I'm asking you to speak into the mic, so the public can hear you.
Does anybody have a problem hearing me? Does anyone have a problem hearing me? Council, do you all have a problem hearing me? Which way would you like for me to face to continue? Okay.
You can move it.
So the Darlington Amphitheater has not been allowed or given access to the City of Darlington since two thousand sixteen, when the school board took it over. As of two thousand twenty-three, that same school board intends to close down St. John's Elementary School and take it away from the City of Darlington and our six hundred students who attend that school. Okay? And now, you all plan to spend five million dollars of hospitality taxes, Philo funds from Georgia Pacific, and our American Rescue Act funds to build baseball and football fields on property on Blue Street that the same Darlington County School District owns. The same school district who abandoned our amphitheater and took it away from the City of Darlington, and the same school district who plans to close down our beloved and most historic public school in the entire state of South Carolina. Now, I know you guys negotiated with the school district for nine months about these ballfields, but I'd like for somebody to tell me tonight what negotiations went on between our city council and the Darlington County School District regarding St. John's Elementary School. Can you hear me now? Anybody?
None.
What negotiations were had about our school that educates six hundred students who are citizens of the City of Darlington? You wanna forfeit those students and spend five million dollars on property that the school district owns for eight percent of Darlington's population who participates in recreation sports? You've committed us to paying two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for twenty years for eight percent of our population. It's not gonna happen without a fight, and I'm not threatening violence. By fight, I mean head to head with people who know what's going on and know the law. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
All business, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash eleven zoning designation, nine oh five Chestnut Street.
I gave each of you a planning packet, we'll start at the top. Item A is the second reading for ordinance, twenty twenty-three eleven, the zoning designation for nine oh five Chestnut Street for Mrs. Patricia Causey. If you look at the map on this attached property, you'll see the subject area shown in blue in the center right here. This property is out Washington Street toward the bypass, left on Chestnut, and then is on the right. The property is presently zoned LI, or Limited Industrial, which would allow for wholesaling, distribution, storage, processing, and other manufacturing uses. The surrounding areas in Limited Industrial are shown on this map, LI, in yellow. And they are an oil plant, trucking company, and propane gas distribution. Uh, those that are, uh, shown in green are the contiguous GC or general commercial property areas, which allow a wider range of businesses and commercial uses. And those surrounding areas are the casket company, a funeral home, and a motel. The request for the zoning changes to accommodate the entire store. The planning commission recommended GC, general commercial zoning designation, as fitting inappropriate for this parcel. This is a second reading for zoning ordinance, twenty twenty-three eleven, zoning designation for nine oh five Chestnut Street.
You have not received any unfavorable comments relative to this rezoning?
Uh, no, sir. The entire area is surrounded by the, uh, Limited Industrial and the general commercial, so it being general.
The town hall is just across the street.
Yes, sir, so in keeping with the surrounding area.
I would make a motion that we approve second reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash eleven, the zoning designation for nine oh five Chestnut Street, that it be rezoned as general commercial.
Second.
Craver. Miss Packard. Mr. Carter. Seager. Motion's carried. All right, all business, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash twelve, annexation of one eighteen Ness Perse Drive, parcel number one eight four dash zero zero dash oh one dash oh seven three.
Uh, this is item eight B, the second reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-three twelve, to annex the property at one eighteen Ness Perse Drive in the country club area for Mr. and Mrs. Ronald LeBeck. If you look at the map, you'll see on this property shaded in orange, the subject property we're talking about, with all, with the other properties that are inside the City of Darlington shown in blue. As you can see, this parcel is contiguous to the city limits as it's required. This is the second reading for ordinance, twenty twenty-three twelve, to annex the property at one eighteen Ness Perse Drive.
I make a motion that we approve the second reading ordinance of two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, annexation of one eighteen Ness Perse Drive, parcel number one eight four dash zero zero dash zero one dash zero seven three.
I'll second that. Mr. Millian. Mrs. Craver. Miss Packard. Mr. Seager. Very good, motion's carried, thank you. All right, new business, uh, election of mayor pro temp, due to nomination.
I'll move to nominate John Seager as mayor pro temps.
Mrs. Craver. Miss Packard.
No.
Mrs. uh, Reed.
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you. Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, new business, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash oh one, zoning designation for one eighteen Ness Perse Drive.
Item nine B is the first reading for the zoning designation for one eighteen Ness Perse Drive for Mr. and Mrs. LeBeck. Um, if you look at this map, shown in orange is the subject area, like on the larger map we just saw. This is out in the country club area in Darlington. Property presently has no zoning as it's being annexed into the city. You can see that all the properties that are surrounding, um, this area, um, in blue, which are already in the City of Darlington, um, and, uh, these all have the. which are already in the city of Darlington, and these all have the designation R10, which is low-density residential. This is intended to foster, preserve, and protect the areas of the community in which the principal land use is detached single-family dwellings. The planning commission has recommended a R10 zoning designation as fitting and appropriate for this parcel. This is the first reading for the zoning designation 2024-01 for 118 Ness Perse Drive.
Make a motion that we approve first reading of ordinance 2024-01, zoning designation for 118 Ness Pierce Drive as R10.
Second.
Mr. Craven? Mr. Packus?
Yes.
Mr. Craven? Mr. Sager? Mr. Sager, thank you. My department on dates with respect to the orders number-
I'll start talking before I get up here, so I make a quick thank you for having me. Welcome returning council members and welcome new council members. The Darlington Police Department, in my opinion, is doing well. We have officers that just graduated the academy and are in their field training stage of their career. We still have officer at the academy, and we have interviews next week. One thing I would like to mention, and we recently did a promotion. If Officer Washington would come forward, Officer Ariel Washington was promoted to sergeant. She is an outstanding officer. Very friendly with the community, gets along with all the other officers, and her quality of work has shown that she can be a leader as well. Everybody in the department agreed that we should go forward with her promotion. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And if anybody would like to meet the officers that we just put on the street, if they're in my department, if they're working, we'd be more glad to introduce you to them, have you meet them, tell you what we do and how we do it. Thank you again.
All right.
Previously, you were short and had several vacancies. How many vacancies are there now remaining in your office?
I'm gonna put it at five to seven, depending on how you count your SROs.
Even including with those members who are at the academy, you're still five to seven officers?
I had one leave us to go to Hornburg just recently.
So you just hired, did you just hire any of them, or they're still at the academy?
I got one that's still at the academy, and I'm interviewing two next week. I'm interviewing two next week, potentially hire them. We're slowly getting there.
Do we have cameras in any particular areas of the city to help monitor things that are going on?
We have two at the courthouse that are southeast, southeast corner and north- southwest corner and northeast corner that we look at what they can around that courthouse. They can pan, but if you move it, something happens over here, if I move it over there, it happens over there, it just seems to do it. I try to get it right and catch the vehicles that come through. And it has helped us before, out of the desk room, it hit in the crosswalk.
I would like for you to give some thought. I noticed when we were having our public meetings for the Renovate Master Plan that there were some ladies at the table where I was who live in wards one and two that were concerned about a lack of feeling safe in their communities, being able to walk out in the evenings and things like that. And I don't know whether it needs to be addressed through additional manpower or what, but I don't want those folks to be feeling uncomfortable about where they live.
And I don't think it's just one community or one person. I believe that's everybody, and I feel about the same way when I do anywhere anymore. But I do believe that more-
I just know Mr. Gordon and I were sitting at a table where that was a concern that was always by a number of people.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'll definitely look into it, thank you. Thank you all.
Does Councilor Justice Prentice-
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Mayor and Council? I'm here to give you a brief update on the thought department. As of January, we are halfway through our budget. I believe I'm still on track, Mr. Payne hasn't called to tell me I have over staff. So we're doing good there. We are fully staffed, can always use volunteers, so if any of you want to come out and try it, we'll suit you up and get you in there. We are still in the running for the radio grants. You were kind enough to give us First Hundred Eleven. We should know something in about a month and a half whether we receive the federal funding for the other 20 radios in here. Other than that, we're taking it day by day and trying to do what we can do to help everybody out. You have any questions?
Thank you for your service.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, I'm Charles Sager. I'm the director of the Order Department, Facility Department, and Storm Order Department. I'm the acting or interim director of the Street Department, the Sanitation Department, and the City Garage. I've been asked to come here tonight to tell about projects that we have here in the city and where they are. Currently, we have six projects in process open. We have two that are coming up very quickly. One is the Allen, and these names are really confusing guys. Some of them are almost the same, so, and I'm sorry about that. That was just the way they were titled. One of them is the Allen Street Forest Main Old Florence Highway Pump Station Elimination Project. This project eliminates the pump station in Bowen Mountain, installs a gravity sewer from D Avenue down to Bowen Mountain. That project is almost complete. The only things that I think they have left are a punch list, a fence, and some cleanup sort of things. They had a fence that they had to take down at the ballpark over there, and there may be some other cleanup, landscape items along Dixie Cup's parking lot that need to be completed. The next one is the Allen Street Pump Station, South Main Street, Farm Street Gravity Sewer Project. And that's close to the other names, so that's where it gets confusing. That project has installed the gravity lines on South Main down to E Avenue and down E Avenue to Second Avenue. They've also installed the gravity sewer on Farm Street. There was a shallow manhole that ran over, I've been told, over there for about 10 or 12 years.
Installed what on Farm Street?
They, at that manhole that overflowed, they lowered all that and enlarged that so that it won't overflow again, hopefully. And ran new gravity sewer from that manhole down to King Edward and over to Lemon Street Pump Station. That project also has the Allen Street Pump Station Rehabilitation in it. There was a 32-week hold on the pumps. They have the pumps in hand now, they don't have the electrical components. They should be coming soon. Third project is the East Broad Street Hurricane Day Emergency Response Project. If y'all remember, the last day of August, we had a tropical storm that was due to Hurricane Adelia that came up the coast and flooded the area in and around Harries and South Main, and other places all over the city. And a sinkhole opened up in front of the Feed and Seed down East Broad Street in the Green Mill. And we immediately contacted everybody. I wrote letters to every congressman, including President Joe Biden, and I got answers for all from all of them, including Tim Scott's office, who sent a representative up here, who has helped us. We contacted FEMA, and the state did not reach a certain threshold for disaster relief. So we are now at a point where they would only pay for emergency response measures, and that meant anything that's temporary. Anything that's permanent, they won't pay for. Yeah, I know, I know, Coach. So we engaged Evans pavement, who's been really helpful with us the day the hurricane happened, the day the sinkhole was created, to make the area safe. We barricaded it off, we closed the road, and as everyone knows, it's been a struggle. We have replaced 550 feet of sewer pipe down East Broad Street. The plans are to patch that street with pavement and go ahead and open up traffic as soon as possible. And then we're gonna pave it as soon as the, and I may get this wrong, they call it the opening of the paving season, which is ordinarily right around March 21st. That doesn't mean it won't be done, it will be done on March 21st. It may be over into April when it will be completely repaved, but between now and then, we are gonna patch it. And we are gonna apply for, we've been working with FEMA on this grant, on this emergency response grant, and we plan to give them our numbers by Friday of this week. We work with them every week with this thing, we give them updates. The next project is the City Lane Storm Sewer Collapse Project. There was a storm sewer that collapsed beside the new museum, across that parking lot, across city, into City Lane. And it's a danger to anybody that travels along that area. We've again engaged Evans pavement to do this. We created a specification, set of plans, put it out for bid, and Evans pavement was the lowest bidder, and I can't tell you what that is right now. That project should begin soon. The next one is the South Main Street Gravity Sewer Emergency Project. If you all remember, about a year ago, we had a problem over on South Main Street with sewers, with gravity sewers, and they were just above Lee Street in and around Nick's Barbecue or Barbecue Shop right along in that area. And we started that project. Now, we've been chasing that project ever since. We got it down to Lee Street, and we went down Lee Street for a certain portion, but we left alone because it's flowing. However, we still need to complete an area from City Lane up to, there's a church there, I think it's called the Church of God, I believe. The prior administration made a joint repair in front of that church up to a manhole at Pine Street, and we hope to attach to that. If this sewer is good and was laid correctly and all still in place, we will. And then we want to continue that on from Pine Street down to Edward Street. And all of that is about 450 more feet of pipe. However, the sewers are flowing over there right now real good, so we're not getting into it. It's manpower, labor, and expensive. But we are gonna get to it. In fact, I told Michael to go ahead and order the rest of the pipe today so that we can get that project underway. East Broad Street, South Main Street, Gravity Sewer Lining Project. On December the 14th, in this courtroom, we opened bids for that project. That was the third time we had bid that project. The first time, we had no bidders at all. The second time we bid it, we had one bidder. We decided not to open their bid with just one bidder because our funding agencies, Community Development Block Grant, would not allow us to continue that project with just one bidder. They wouldn't give us the money. And we thought that it would be unfair to that bidder if we had opened that bid and exposed his numbers to the world. So we re-advertized and rebid the project again. This time, we asked for permission from CDVG due to it was the third time we had gone to bids, and they had told us that we had to get some people to say, to bid on it saying they did not want to bid. In other words, a no bid. So we got those, and we got this same bidder back that bid on the project, again, back to Evans pavement. And we have not awarded him that project yet. That project consists of sewer lining on the rest of South Main Street where we have not gone, and that will complete all of the main line on South Main Street. South Main Street carries all sewer from all those side streets. And it carries it down to East Broad and down to the Old West Water Treatment Plant or Grove Hill in that area, and then it's pumped onto Sewer Treatment Plant. It will also replace and reline the sewer on East Broad Street where we have not completed. Now, remember, we just did some with this Hurricane Adelia project. Also, the prior administration did some down around the Antique Folks right along in there. Yes. Oh, I can't, I can't remember the name. Yeah. So that was done prior to my arrival here. So we plan to connect to those, and we're, at this time now, we are going to subtract the amount of pipe that we put in for Hurricane Adelia, and of course, the amount of pipe that we put in on South Main Street when we did the emergency repair a year ago. We have, two other projects are upcoming very quickly. On next Tuesday at 2:00 PM in this courtroom, we're gonna open bids for the Highway 34 Pump Station and Black Creek Sewer Line Bore Project. This will be the first of the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Skip Grants. That's S-C-I-I-P, South Carolina Infrastructure Improvement Project. We were awarded $3 million for three projects from RIA, and this is one of those. This particular project was, is funded through RIA for about $600,000. Seems like $550,000, $60,000, $70,000, something like that. This will eliminate the elevated sewer line that crosses Black Creek on what I'll call the north side of Black Creek. If you go out Highway 34, if you look to the left here in the wintertime, you can see it real good, the leaves are off trees. There's a ductile iron pipe, big black pipe crossing Black Creek, and there's a manhole sitting right out in the middle of the creek. And twice since I've been here during a rainstorm, there's what was described to me as a geyser coming out of the side of the manhole into the creek. And most of that is stormwater coming from the McLeod facility. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna eliminate that elevated sewer line and bore a new sewer line under the creek and install a pump station on the McLeod side. That will also allow for future development out Highway 34, which could be very lucrative for the city. And that's next Tuesday at 2:00 in this courtroom. And as soon as we get that done, we are gonna work on the second of the skip, the second of the three skip projects. And this one is gonna be the City of Darlington Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. With this project, we're gonna replace seven pump stations' mechanical parts, and that will be the pumps and controls for seven of our pump stations. At that time, we will have rehabilitated all of our pump stations in town when we get through with that project. After we get this project kicked off and on the books, we'll start the last of the skip grant projects, which is a, is a project we're gonna do to the wastewater treatment plant. We're gonna rehave one of the sand drying beds. We're gonna install a manual grit chamber, I'll call it, or grit removal device where we can remove sand that's infiltrated into the sewers. We're also gonna build a dump station for our back truck, a permanent station that we can dump into and clean the debris out of what comes out of the, out of the back truck with that project. out of the back truck with that project. And that's all I have for you, ma'am.
Mr. Schumacher, please. You were reading for something there with all of the titles for all of these.
Yeah, would you like that?
Yes, I would.
It's my handwriting, you might not be able to read it.
That's okay, I appreciate it.
Charles, one sec. Just a little housekeeping for me.
Okay.
This is a great report. Glad to see that under, under the City of Darlington, that you're connecting and working and get everything running smooth. But on the ground, I'm having a real big, a real problem with... I would, I would like to see a schedule again of when we can do some pickup of people putting out furniture and keeping up the ease our part. And this is, of course, streets and sanitation. And since you're the interim person there, if you would, we can get some kind of schedule going there because I know, I know it's, it's spread kind of thin, but I have to respond to my...
Yes, ma'am. Not to interrupt you, we, we've been studying that. We, we have moved Jamacy into, into one of the positions with the grapple and the truck controller. And we've given him a schedule also. Now, he needs some training on the grapple itself. He's, he's good on the truck, but he's gotta get some, some, some experience with grapple. And the other guy that we got with what we call that, those units, cherry pickers. And, and that comes from the, the grapple part of that, that apparatus. But we are looking at that, Ms. Reed, and we're making some headway. I'll let you know as soon as we complete that. It, it will be fairly soon.
Was there a report you can give us for the streets and sanitation?
Um, you know, streets and sanitation has, uh... We, we have looked a lot of different things we need to do with streets and sanitation. Streets and sanitation have a lot of different divisions. And, and not, not sure how they've all been funded before in the past. Let me give you one, for instance, Streets has seven thousand dollars for asphalt in it. I fixed, fixed two potholes and I'm out of money without asphalt. We paid for, for potholes in four different departments right now. And probably ought to pay for all those in one department, the street department, so that the City of Darlington knows what it costs to repair all the potholes every year, no matter who creates them or how they're created. Put them all into one pot, and then we'll know what it costs to do. There's a lot of plans that we have for streets and sanitation. There's none that I want to reveal right now. We're just trying to figure out actually what all they have been doing and how they've been funding some of these things. Stormwater is another one. We have no stormwater funds other than to pay for the loan for the Southwest Darlington Drainage Project and the Renovations Project. Those loans that were taken out for those projects take one hundred percent of the budget. And we have to continue to clean out stormwater. And we've got stormwater projects and flooding projects all over town. And we've got sinkholes due to storm sewers all over town. But we don't have any money at all in that budget to do that. Sanitation, we've looked at, and, and a lot of people have gone to this, and I, I like this idea, is the, the side loaded garbage truck, a smaller garbage truck. A good bit smaller garbage truck that loads from the side, where you don't have people that go out and get the cart and bring it back and hook it up, and you got three people on a truck, sometimes four. You only have one person, the driver. He's got a map rest, grabs the, the trash can, brings it over and throws it in the back, sets it back down. Now, they make giant ones too, but that's the smaller ones that can turn easier in these neighborhoods are probably what we need. I, an idea that was brought by the previous administration, I think is a very good idea and, and should be looked at, is the construction of a transfer station. And it doesn't have to be a huge, giant transfer station that the county and everybody in the county and all these other folks use. Just a small one for us. We have these smaller dump, dump, smaller side loaded garbage trucks that can get it to a, a transfer station and dump, and then haul to the landfill in a larger truck later after we get a certain accumulation of it. It may be more economical for us. So, we're looking at that too. The city garage, that's another area where we, we need to make some improvements. We need a, we, in our opinion, we all think we need a maintenance management system that say when these cars go out, or trucks, or vehicles, and we have, you have in my notes, I think. But I think there's fifty-two cars and trucks, there's, there's five trackers, and there's various other large trucks and all sorts of things that the city garage maintains. However, those, we don't have a schedule for those. But we can buy a schedule, a maintenance management schedule, so that whenever they go to the gas pump and buy gas, and they put in the mileage, that goes somewhere and tells them, well, this guy needs a tire rotation, or this one needs an oil change. And, and that's something that we've been looking at. And we've been looking for that, not just for the city garage, but the maintenance management plan for the city. At the same time, that's, it ties into an asset management plan. And, and we've looked at that for the whole city. And we haven't made any decisions on where they're gonna go. They're still a real preliminary. And, and everybody in the world sells one. And we don't need one the size of City Florence, or New York, or Miami. We need one our size. Something that people will use, you know?
I know, one little thing. Who do we need to, is it the city of, of the, of the property transportation and railroad to fix the, that railroad crossing up Washington Street?
That is the railroad's, I know it's terrible. It's, it's the railroad's property. And, and the DOT is just as frustrated with it as we are. The, the DOT will fix it, and then the railroad will go in there and decide that something's not right about their train crossing it and carry it all out and put it back the way they want it. The way the railroad looks at it is that it's their railroad, and, and, and they come first before the highway does. And of course, the highway department feels just the opposite of that. And we do too. But it's, the railroad's a difficult entity to deal with. We, we pay them, I pay them out of the city's water budget and city sewer budget for our water lines and sewer lines that cross them. We have to be permitted to do that. Yes, ma'am. And we have several railroad crossings for water lines and sewer lines. And every one that we have, we pay something out of them. And some of them are pretty expensive. Couple thousand dollars a year for a sewer line that's been crossing the railroad for, I don't know, a hundred years, eighty-five years, I don't know. Long time, a long, long time.
So, Farm Street has been backing up for thirty or forty years. So, what you're saying is, if I understand, listening to what you're saying, y'all went in and put lower the manhole to stop the sewer from backing up on Farm Street? The sewer line, when the guy opened up the, the manhole, and I looked down it, it's probably a foot deep, the whole street. From Main all the way back to, what is that, Southern Pine? Back to Southern Pine is only a foot deep.
King Edward.
King Edward, it's only a foot deep. So, if you lowered the manhole, you telling me by lowering that manhole, it's gonna stop that sewer from backing up on Farm Street? Is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am, I can't guarantee the sewers will work. People can go and dump trash in a sewer line and stock it up, and it'll, it'll overflow anywhere if people dump trash in a sewer line. I can't guarantee you that at all. What I can tell you is that, that manhole that you're talking about was installed to build one house, one, one entity for the housing authority. And they ended up hooking eighty-six apartments onto it and houses. Now, that won't happen because this manhole is less than three foot deep. So, there's a certain amount of flow that has to go through it. So, for one thing, they had to build a larger sewer pipe. But they lowered that, the bottom of that manhole, they lowered all of that gravity sewer down Farm Street, down King Edward Street to Limmet Street Pump Station, and that goes into the wet well at Limmet Street Pump Station. It was very shallow. Now, Limmet Street Pump Station only pumps about far as from here to the police department's window. That's as far as it pumps. It pumps it right out of the Limmet Street Pump Station to a manhole in the middle of the street right there. Now, that manhole flows to Allen Street Pump Station. So, Allen Street Pump Station, if that manhole's overflowing, Allen Street Pump Station's out, not Limmet Street, okay?
So, you're saying the grant that we have, listen to what you just said, the purpose of getting that Allen Street Lift Station Grant was to solve this problem on Farm Street? That was the main purpose for this grant?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, that, that, no, ma'am.
You wasn't here when we had the conversation about pump, pump station. When we first started discussing Allen Street Lift Station and Farm Street, you was not an employee. The conversation was about Farm Street, Farm Street, Farm Street. That was the whole conversation. That's why we pushed, or I pushed, to get that lift station to fix our Farm Street problem. So, now you're telling me that they did not dig up Farm Street? I know that for a fact because I live in that area. So, they did not lower the drainage from where the, from running from Main Street back to King Edward?
No, ma'am, that, that sewer did not go to Main Street. It started at that little manhole in that parking lot. That was where it dead-ended at. That was the end of the sewer line, or the beginning of the sewer line. They lowered that one, they lowered that one. And if you look over there and look, they poured new concrete there. They poured new concrete on the sidewalk. Yeah, because they lowered the manhole.
The manhole, right.
And then they went down Farm Street to King Edward Street and down to Limmet Street. When I first got here, that manhole overflowed, and there were children playing out there. Nobody had done anything at all to do this, to complete this project. So, it was one of my peeps to get this thing fixed. And I got a grant to fix it.
No, we got the grant, the grant was in motion before you came here.
No?
Yes, it was. We applied for the grant before you got here, for Allen Street Lift Station. You wasn't here. Yes, we did, you was not here then. Yes, we did, you did not get that grant. We got that grant, that grant was in motion, and Joe Lewis was in motion before you got here.
Okay, Joe Lewis's pump station and the, and the Altell Pump Station in Grove Hill and the old wastewater treatment plant were in process before I got here. But they had nothing to do with the Allen Street Pump Station, the Limmet Street Pump Station, and the gravity sewer on Farm Street.
Was we not arguing about getting the lift station on Allen Street, you mean?
But that project, that project didn't just...
Before you ever got here.
That project didn't just do, didn't just eliminate Farm Street Gravity Sewer and, and Allen Street Pump Station. That project also put gravity sewer line down South Main Street, all the way from Limmet Street to E Avenue and down E Avenue to Second Street. That project did that as well as the gravity sewer on Farm Street and on King Edward Street and the Allen Street Pump Station Rehabilitation. All three of those things were in that project, not just the Allen Street Pump Station.
All I'm concerned about is Farm. Stop that raw sewer from backing up in these people's apartments, in their kitchens, in their bathrooms.
I agree with you.
That's all I'm concerned about.
Nobody done anything about it until I got here and I applied for a grant for it.
We applied for the grant before you got here. That's what we're not concerned about.
Well, tell you a quick fact, Ms. Backus, I did it.
No, no, you did.
We're in the process.
All I'm concerned about is Farm Street.
We are.
I don't care who applied or not.
All I care about, that's right.
We're almost complete with that project. We, we've completed the gravity sewer on Farm Street, King Edward. We've completed the gravity sewer on South Main Street down to E Avenue over Second Avenue. We built in the bypass operation at Allen Street Pump Station. And the...
Some engineer designed it?
The, another project, the old Florence Pump Station on Allen Street.
It's been designed by an engineer?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but Dixon Brown did this.
Old Florence.
The...
So, we'll see whether it works when it's finished.
All right. The project that I was telling you about, the old Florence Highway Elimination Project, that also installed into Allen Street Pump Station a new force main from there to South Main, okay?
So, since you lowered that, um, manhole and done these improvements, are you still having issues of sewage backup? Have you been getting complaints about sewage backing up since?
We sure hope this one makes sense.
And when was that done?
Oh, within the last six months, six, three, six months. Seems like there's still warm weather there, yes, it's over summer sometime.
There's a new pump going on that corner of Limmet Street, on that corner?
That is part of the seven pump stations that we are gonna bid after we bid the Black Creek Bore Project.
That's one of the ones you're gonna rebuild, that's what you're trying to say?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're not gonna replace it with the Allen Street Lift Station Grant? You're just gonna try to go in and rig it?
No, ma'am.
Or replace it with some parts?
No, ma'am.
Well, that's what you said, you're gonna replace the parts?
We're not gonna rig it, we're gonna completely rebuild all of the, all of the electrical components and put new pumps in, to all of our pump stations.
Getting over it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
Good evening, Mayor Housen. So, the Coast Department, right now, we're in the middle of, FEMA is getting ready to change the flood maps. And so, we have, have a hundred and seventy-four properties that are in the flood hazard area. And of those, a hundred and five properties are increasing or gonna be new to the flood hazard area. So, a letter has gone out to all of those properties that are affected. And they have until March to appeal it. And then, March the fifth, the city has to send our submittal to FEMA with any appeals that we receive from property owners. So, we're doing that. And in doing that, we, I realized that we, as a jurisdiction, don't have a way to track all of our properties. Who's in the flood plain in one location? We have to go here and see who's zoning, and go here and see, is it commercial? And here and see, is it a house? You know, all these different things. And so, I developed a program with our, the software that we currently have, so that we can type in an address, or we can type in a map number, and it will come up on one page. Who owns it, what's zoned, is it in the historic district, is it developed, what occupancy it is, if there's a tenant, contact information. So, we're, we've had a thousand addresses and information already inputted. So, we're gonna finish the city, so, and we can click. So, if I'm not in the office and someone has a question, you can click on a button and it pulls up the zoning map without her having to go track it down, or building requirements, or what historic district it is, and where is it? And, you know, on the flood map, where is it on the flood map? So, we're doing that. We are, we...
Explain to them, before you get too far removed from FEMA, the appeal. The appeals, you, you can't just say, I disagree, it's very technical.
Right, so, you, there's an appeal form you have to fill out. And you can put comments on it, but it has to be more than, you can put comments like, I don't, my house has never flooded. And that will be sent, but not as an appeal. That'll be just sent as a comment. In order for it to be a true appeal, you have to hire an engineer. They have to do an independent study. And the, the scientific information, the technical information that they receive from the study, if it negates, whether it negates it or not, but it, you know, obviously, if it negates it, then that's submitted to the office, and that's what is sent to FEMA. And then their people will decide whether or not it's gonna adjust the property out of the flood hazard area or if it's gonna remain the way their studies have found it. So, it's not just a matter of, I don't wanna be in the flood area. My house has never flooded for thirty years. It has to be more technical than that, and it has to come from an engineer's study.
So, they will be, there's a fee to this, to the homeowners?
Oh, yeah, they have to pay for the engineer, that's not something that the...
And they're being, this is being mandated for them to do that, correct, sister? And we can't clear up, it's a law, but we had it, that's fine. Go ahead.
So, how did you determine? what area was in the flood area?
What, so it's basically all of the areas that are close to a creek?
Oh.
Right?
So the country club is in the flood area?
The, most of them, right. So Williamson Park is in, stretches from Williamson Park all the way through Governor Williams Highway. Out along the Country Club was mostly affected, um, by the increase. In fact, Roanoke and Wood Creek, um, that was not even close to being in a flood area is now right in the middle of a flood area. Um, the floodway has increased. But you can come to the office and I can show you on the map. Every, all the, all the differences.
All right, is this map available to the public?
Yes ma'am, are the, the notice that went out? Um, and if you call the office tomorrow, um, I can tell you what the website is.
Okay.
Um, and then kind of navigate you through it so, because there's little buttons at the top that say, um, effective, which are our current maps. And then if you click preliminary, it'll show you the change. So you can type in the right side the address and then you can toggle back and forth between effective and preliminary. So you can see the differences in different areas.
Okay, thank you, I might have to go here.
Absolutely. Absolutely, that's what we're here for.
Sheila, would you, uh, this is just me asking, um, uh, is it, to ask you to kind of look at the ordinance that I've been acquiring about with this overgrown properties and what the city can do and see how we can, uh, what wording can be used to, to improve it? So that we, the city can have some kind of, um, input in requiring these homeowners to clean up these properties? Or give us some kind of authority to do it and bill them off something? I just wanna see, I mean, cause there's so much in my area that's
That's gonna be difficult in that, cause there is a difference between overgrown and undeveloped. So if it's an overgrown property and that's the grass or growth is eighteen inches or higher, then we can enforce that. But if it's undeveloped, in that there's trees and all of this that, you know, there's, it's not just a matter of cutting the grass or taking a bush hog and cleaning it out. You know, it's, um, I'll have to do research to see if there's any other jurisdictions that are in the states, um, that have something. Um, but it's, it, I feel as though it'll be hard pressed to find a statute or ordinance that would require a property owner to clear their land. But I will, I will research it to see
Here's where I have was having the problem because the areas that I'm talking about are not what you call undeveloped because they had homes on them. They were never, they were, they are, they are not naturally like that. It's now, so that is where I'm having a problem.
And that's where we would have to see if there's corroborating evidence, cause I can't just say, you know, you know, so and so says that there was a house there twenty years ago and so now it's overgrown. Or so and so says that there was a, you know, so how do, how do we, um, how do we qualify a property without any kind of evidence other than here said?
If it has an address, it is. If it, and on that street, there was, those are addresses that those, in those lots.
Well, it
I mean, it's, 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 it's somewhere in your code.
But most of, well, most of our, when properties are demolished and the structure is removed, whenever that was, the address is removed. Because we have found that in addressing some of our properties, they were addressed incorrectly. I have addresses on Broad Street where it's, you know, I'm gonna make up the address just cause I don't remember, but it's, it goes one sixteen, one eighteen,
Yeah.
one twenty. And then it goes backwards, one fourteen.
Right.
You know, so some of our addresses aren't right. Or some of them, you know, it's one fourteen on this side, but it's, you know,
Yes.
one twenty-three directly across the street. And so when, when structures are removed, addresses are also removed. So that if it gets developed again, we can address it properly instead of the way that it has been addressed currently. But it is something, yes ma'am, I will research it and see if there's any ordinances that are in the area or any statutes that would allow us to do something like that, um, for properties.
Wellington?
Where, where are we at with the abandoned cars?
I'm already researching that to see if we can do something a little more body so that it's not more, it's not as long and drawn out. Um, even like the, the RVs on Medford Place, the new property owner, um, for two months now, he has been jumping through hoops through D M B and the state to legally remove RVs that have been there for so long. But since he owns the property and the RVs are personal property and not, not real property, he has to do it a certain way. So we're trying to navigate through that so that we can find a way to do it legally and properly.
I'm saying like, for example, across from the subway park that we do there, London Street or whatever it is that through, there's a car sitting there, it's, it's overgrown, there's grass sitting on the side of the road.
Well, that's different, sitting on the side of the road.
Houses over here off of across the Carl Wash, uh, their house is fixed up, you know, nicely. Then they took that, there's three, you know, junk cars back there in the back.
Right.
And we asked to give a boot.
Right, well, and so there's a difference between a, a car being on, on private property and a car being on public way. So there is a, um, a car
The ordinance agrees that if it's in the city, it's supposed to, it's supposed to have a tag, correct?
If it's in the city, it's supposed to have a tag, but we can't just pull them off people's private property.
According to the judge, according to the
Well, it has to go in front of the judge.
According to the judge, I'm talking both judges, if I guess according to both judges, they aren't gonna do anything about it.
Well, I, well, except, you said the judge said he's not gonna do anything about it?
Well, they can't, they don't have a way of doing anything about it. They don't have a way of, according to the judges, I've talked, when I talked to them, it says it's a city.
Right.
The lawyer, that we have the right to, to take it from them.
But our city ordinance says that it has to go in front of the judge. It's a misdemeanor, it doesn't say that we can just pull it off the property. That's what I'm saying, that I have to do the research, we might not, because our ordinance doesn't allow us to just pull it off the property that, that way.
We're gonna adjust it, cause right now it's up, everybody can just do what they wanna do, so we're gonna
Right, and so, right, and so that is being researched as well. But as it stands now, I can't just pull a car off of private property, it has to go in front